You come back, we'll get started.
Yes, sir.
I gave you, I gave you four minutes, or no, six minutes.
Lisa, you may have won the race, so.
I did.
I think you did, but you've got a contender right beside you there, so.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order tonight. This is the city council meeting, regular meeting of May seventeenth. Call it to order. First order of business is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing, but tonight we have Pastor Anthony Edwards from the First Presbyterian Church. Pastor, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you and we thank you, Lord, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, Lord, for another light of day, Father, that we're able to see. We thank you for this opportunity as we come together, Father, for our city and our community, Father, and we just pray for our mayor as well as all of our council members, that you would touch them with wisdom and knowledge as we move forward with the agenda of tonight. But, Father, we wanted to recognize you and thank you for all the things that you have already done in the city of Casa Grande, all the things that you're going to do, and all the things that you're doing right now that we don't see, nor do we realize or recognize that it's you working behind the scenes. So we thank you and we honor you, and we just pray that we continue to walk in wisdom and knowledge, that at the end of the day, it'd be well done with you. So we thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Still in the community. Thank you.
Go Cardinals, too.
Go Cougars.
Oh, yeah, there's another team, too, but.
Thank you, Bob. He works with some other team, too. I think Cardinals or something like that. All right. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, regarding our minutes, I move approval of the city council, regular meeting minutes from May third as presented, and that we accept for the record the planning and zoning commission minutes from April first, and the art and humanities commission minutes from April sixth as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next is claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated April 28th to May 11th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Note, Lisa Fitzgibbons abstained. Item E is the meeting agenda approval. So Larry, any changes from staff or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Anything on, from council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Approval as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved as presented. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that you want to pull off? Anybody from the public? Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. The public comments, can I make a comment on this section, Larry, since it's been scratched? Actually, I should have asked Brett.
I think you could certainly comment on things, but we can't ask for comments from the public.
Right, I wasn't going to ask for a comment. I just wanted to give some clarification. The public comments have been taken off because of the pandemic and the COVID protocols that we've been following. So I was going to do this in my reports, but I could do it now. We're gonna, we're going to look at, we're not look, going to look at, we are going to probably change our protocols effective June first. That means that by June seventh, city council meeting, we will resume public comments. They will be back on the agenda. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. We're also going to change the capacities in here, as long as things continue the way they have been, which has been looking good. So just look for that information. We'll probably get it out through our PIO here in the next week or two. All right, moving then to item I, which is our words of contracts, and considering ordinance, or I one, which is ordinance number three, two, six, seven.
Mr. Mayor and council, this item before you will renew a managed print services agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Xerox Business Solutions. This is a five-year agreement under Arizona State Contract ADSP 018-216033 and the Safe Contract 2011113. This agreement has a better cost structure than the current agreement that we, we run the, under the Mohave Cooperative. This month, the month-to-month spend will drop from $7,789 to $5,869, resulting in monthly savings of $1,920.
Wow, something went down. Thank you.
This will refresh multi-function printer hardware that is showing its age without a steep initial investment. The estimate for this investment is $170,492. This contract seeks also to standardize multi-function printers, printer hardware across 21 facilities, and consolidate smaller HP printers where opportunities exist. It will introduce flexible printing and other features that are expected to reduce overall print volume by approximately 30% over time. Currently, we have multi-function printers, we have a count of 35, and HP desktop printers, we have a count of 83. We're seeking to reduce that count for multi-function printers to 24, and HP desktop printers to 55, and that's providing more state-of-the-art functionalities across 21 facilities. After evaluation of the value and terms, staff determined that the quoted price was a good rate to provide managed print services to the city with updated hardware and functionalities. We recommend accepting the contract with a total not to exceed the cost of $441,617, including sales tax and contingency for a five-year term. I will entertain your questions if you have any. I also invited our IT manager, Aaron, to sit in on this meeting to address any questions you have that may be IT-related.
Anybody have any questions?
It's a savings.
Just a note, the Mohave is, is out of the, out of this now, aren't they?
Yes, they will be out once the contract, yes, once the contract is signed and initiated.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions or comments, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Carla. Almost called you Gloria.
Ordnance number three, two, six, seven, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Xerox Business Solutions for the purpose of managed print services, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Xerox Business Solutions.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance three, two, six, seven as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next item is I two, consider ordinance number three, two, six, eight. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening. With your permission, I'd like to cover the next three items in one discussion, and then you can take action on them separately, if that's okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, this is our annual on-call contracts process. We've gone through the request for qualifications on three programs. The first one is our on-call maintenance and repair services program. This is for our Public Works Department, working on larger projects throughout the community, and it's also available for other departments to take advantage of, like the Parks Department, golf course, anybody doing some of those larger projects. This could include small paving projects, concrete work, those types of things, not to be confused with our facilities maintenance contract and repair services, which is more for our facilities. That's the indoor stuff, carpentry, HVAC systems, lighting systems, plumbing, those types of things. And then our third one, which is our professional services contract, and that's for us to go out and hire the people who do consulting services for us. And again, all three of these programs have been very successful. The, the I, I two is the maintenance and repair services. That's going to be 28 different contracts, so you'll be approving all of those contracts tonight, and then none of those contracts will be moved forward with unless we negotiate a price, scope, and fee for any of those projects. And then the, the appropriate budget has to have that authority to move forward with that project. And the limits on that is no single project of $24,999, and then an annual aggregate over $150,000 for any single contractor. With the professional services, we are able to use a, a higher limit, and that is $100,000 for any single contract, and no more than 150 for aggregate. And of course, consulting services with those projects, and with the number of projects that we have coming up and, and needing to react to in pretty short order to meet some of the timelines that we're facing with some of the developments, this really gives us the flexibility to move forward in a quick fashion to get things completed. And then the last one has the, for the facilities, has the same $24,999 per contract, and then no aggregate over $150. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any idea of how many of the, up to, I think you said 35, any idea of how many are local?
I don't write offhand. I know that a majority of the contracts, or at least a good portion of the contracts, in our facilities maintenance, those are, are locals, and we always try to reach out to our local vendors first to make sure that they have the capability of moving forward with the project before we go out of town. But we do try to use our local folks as much as we can.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mayor, I have a quick one.
Sure.
So I know we've done this for several years. Do you, I mean, you must not get complaints because you've done it for so long, but the only thing I worry about is someone may have missed it, and they're not on the list, and, you know, they missed it a couple of years. So I'm assuming no, since you've done this for so many years, that, that people don't are concerned?
We get, we get lots of complaints. So we, we've worked very diligently with our local contractors to make sure they know when things are coming out. And if we have contracts that, that we want to move forward with in the future, we make sure that those firms or those contractors know about this in advance. Everyone who signs up through the city clerk's portal that, you know, is interested in, in taking advantage of these opportunities gets notice. It's typically somebody dropping the ball, okay? So we've done our best to make sure that people who want to be part of this program have the information they need to be part of it.
Well, I think that's my, and that's my concern. I just want to make sure that the communication is out there. But I would think since we've done this for several years, they may have learned the first year or second year, you know, with the way the process works. So I would hope that they would catch on after a couple of years, because I know we've done this for a while.
They need to go onto our website, right?
Exactly.
And if anybody goes onto our website, the first thing that pops up is, hey, you want us to continue to communicate with you? And if you don't click yes, you're not going to get notifications.
Right.
So people have to get involved.
Yeah, the other complaint that we get is we don't use some contractors. You know, there's no guarantee that we'll use someone. It's if we need them, they're there for us, and we have the contract in place for us to move forward with those negotiations, and then move forward with the project. You know, we've found a very successful program so far. We'd love to see the limits higher, but we have a little thing called our city charter that kind of limits us, as our city attorney will remind us every time we submit for higher amounts. But that is one thing that we're, we're looking forward to. The other thing I'm looking forward to is if we ever do, as we discussed in the council retreat, about bringing a procurement person on, this is something that we're going to make sure they understand and help us run it, and maybe clean up some of the issues that we've had with, you know, staff maybe dropping the ball here or there.
And it'll be consistent, too, because it'll be the same person.
Right.
Between all departments. Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no further questions or comments, then I'll consider ordinance number three, two, six, eight.
Ordinance number three, two, six, eight, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of 28 agreements with various companies for the purpose of providing various maintenance and repair services for fiscal year 2022, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution by the city manager of the 28 agreements.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance thirty-two sixty-eight as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next is I three. You've already discussed, right? So we're going to move and consider ordinance number three, two, six, nine.
Ordinance number three, two, six, nine, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of 35 agreements with various companies for the purpose of providing various professional services for fiscal year 2022, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution by the city manager of the 35 agreements.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number thirty-two sixty-nine as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion.
And I also was happy to do that because there's 35 on mine, and there was only 28 on the other one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, having a motion and a second, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Now, I four only has 15, Mr. Powell. Are you good with that? All right, so we've had this discussion as well, so we'll consider ordinance number three, two, seven, zero.
Ordinance three, two, seven, zero, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of 15 agreements with various companies for the purpose of providing various facilities maintenance and repair services for fiscal year 21, 2021 to 2022, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution by the city manager of the 15 agreements.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number thirty-two seventy, and the 15 agreements, which would bring me up to 43 costs more.
Touche.
I, I object.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number three, two, seven, zero. Carla, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Sneaky, but yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
It's why he's a, a school teacher. Yes. All right, next item on agenda is I five, consider ordinance number three, two, seven, one. Kevin, this one's yours, too.
I'm going to be here for a little while. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sturgeon Electric Company for a base bid amount of $102,088, with a contingency of $2,912, for a total amount of $105,000 for the installation of streetlights within the Cottonwood Gardens subdivision. If you don't already know, Cottonwood Gardens is a subdivision that is just north of Cottonwood Lane and west of Thornton Boulevard. So this neighborhood currently has no streetlights in it, and this is an opportunity for us to use CDBG funds that were originally programmed in 2019 to finish this project. So we've been working towards this point to have these 13 new streetlights installed, and these are solar streetlights. So this is something that we've done on several occasions in other areas where we don't have the infrastructure to take advantage of underground power, so we're using solar in, in this location. This budget does have, or this project does have adequate budget fund, funded for it through the CDBG program. So with that, if you'd happen to answer any questions.
Matt?
I got one question, Kevin. How long do these lights last, or the batteries, I guess, is the, the big issue?
Typically, I don't know specifically about this one, but the solar lights that we've used in the past had a 10-year warranty. But we've been seeing really good performance and everything that we've done with our due diligence on the products. I think we're going to get a lot more than that. And typically, it's not yet to replace the whole thing. It's a component. In, in Arizona, those are the batteries. But they've come a long ways with batteries. The last time, I think, I looked, six years ago, there was a three-year warranty on batteries, and now they're up to 10. So obviously, things are changing.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions of Kevin?
I just have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Many, many years ago, we put this development in the city, and it wasn't. And I remember Mr. Powell going to one of the community meetings, because this is where my mother resided, and he met with the citizens, and, and he really started this process. So they are very appreciative of everything that is, the city has done for them, including the streets, and this is just another example. So kudos to Mr. Powell for seeing the foresight on that.
Kevin, how many streetlights is it going to be?
13.
13? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number three, two, seven, one, please. Carla?
Ordinance number three, two, seven, one, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sturgeon Electric Company Incorporated to provide construction of the program year 2019, Community Development Block Grant Solar Powered Streetlight Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number thirty-two seventy-one as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Carla?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, that finishes the I's. Let's go to K. As ordinance and resolutions and other matters are subjects requiring action of the council. First item is item K, which is resolution number five, two, nine, nine. Mr. Lewis?
Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to apply for and accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Transportation, and this is their aeronautics division for runway 523 and connector taxiway pavement preservation in an amount not to exceed $725,000, and to execute all grants, contract documents, distribute funds, and perform necessary budget transfers. The aeronautics group, part of ADOT's multi-mogul, excuse me, multimodal planning division, develops a five-year airport capital improvement program, and the program provides for state-funded grants and approves those projects for state, local funding that have met the state's transportation board's qualifying priority rating. So state aviation funds are distributed, and there's three major areas that they distribute these particular funds. It's design construction, which this project is part of that, and then there's also planning and land acquisition. And the state transportation board approves the distribution annually. So we're very fortunate to have this opportunity to apply for and receive this, these grant funds. Hopefully, we'll be successful. And this process, process does kind of move very quickly because there are very short deadlines that we have to meet to take advantage of these funds. There is a 10% match, so the city's portion of this will be $75,500. And with your approval, we'll, we'll hopefully get this budget for in the next year and move forward with it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, will this help us connect to the through-the-gate piece there, or is this just existing taxiway?
Yeah, this is our, this is our main runway, five and 23, and, and it's five and 23, five degrees north, 23 degrees south. It depends on the direction you're approaching the runway, and then the adjacent taxiway. That'll be the preserve, pavement preservation.
It's all existing, right?
It's all existing. So it does not connect to the runway we're currently, or the taxiway we're currently designing.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, then I'll consider resolution number five, two, nine, nine. Carla?
Resolution number five, two, nine, nine, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division Aeronautics Group, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the program in an amount up to $725,000, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing other actions in support of the grant.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number five, two, nine, nine as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, K two, consider ordinance number 3272.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to participate in the Arizona Department of Transportation's Airport Pavement Preservation Program for asphalt maintenance on Taxiway B to include a one-inch asphalt overlay and then pavement markings with a construction estimate of $572,297, and to execute all contracts and documents, distribution of funds, and perform any necessary budget transfers. This is a little different, these aren't discretionary funds, these are pavement preservation funds specifically based on pavement ratings. So I haven't been up here asking for pavement preservation grant fund authorization through ADOT for quite a while because we've not been eligible for those grant funds. We are now back in the good graces of ADOT, and because we haven't had any projects out there, our pavement conditions have really deteriorated, so both of these projects this evening are because ADOT really wants to support the airport and get our pavement back up to standard. So this project, the design for this project is 100% covered and the construction management by ADOT, and then the construction contract is fully administered by ADOT. We do have a 10% match, which is $57,230 for this project, and I should note that if there are any cost overruns, we are responsible for that at that 10% rate, so ADOT would cover any cost overruns the entire amount, and then we would reimburse them our 10% share. So it's just important to note that we've had this stipulation in other contracts, and ADOT's done a really good job of keeping these things within budget, so we've been, we feel pretty confident that that won't happen, but if it does, and we don't have the spending authority, we'll be back in front of you asking permission for more, but hopefully that does not happen. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
So we're back in the pretty good, good graces up at the airport with ADOT.
Today with ADOT, yes.
Sounds like a qualifier. You know, like, there should be a qualifier there somewhere. All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no more questions, then I'll consider it an ordinance number 3272, please. Carla?
Ordinance number 3272, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing participation in the Arizona Department of Transportation's Airport Surface Treatment Program 2022, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary on behalf of the city of Casa Grande for the purpose of the Casa Grande Municipal Airport's Taxiway B, Section 20 Pavement Preservation Project, authorizing the city finance director to disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3272 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item L, Public Hearings. First item is item L1, it's a public hearing in consideration of resolution number 5300, CDBG funds, otherwise known as Community Development Block Grants.
Correct. So this evening, we are presenting our annual action plan, excuse me, for fiscal year 22, program year 21, so we're recommending the approval of the annual action plan as presented. The Housing and Office of Housing and Urban Development announced the annual community development entitlement allocation for the city of Casa Grande would be $478,227 for fiscal year 22. In preparation of this year's annual action plan, a public hearing was held virtually on March 9th with 17 participants in attendance. They were able to join us by webex, phone, or video. The public notice was published in the English and Spanish in the dispatch and on our website. Comments received during the public meeting were related to job placement for disabled and low-income rental and utility assistance and owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. The CDBG applications were available on our city website and were accepted from March 10th through March 30th. The annual action plan was available for public review comment from April 12th through May 12th online, and we had a copy, a hard copy in our office. No comments were received. The 30-day public review notice was posted in the dispatch and on our website. Upon review and evaluation of all the submitted applications, the review committee is making the following recommendations to be included in the program year 21 Annual Action Plan. And as you all know, CDBG national objectives are to benefit the low-to-moderate income persons, aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, and meet a national need. So the recommendations are through the public services, we can allocate up to 15% of the allocation to public services, and these are the recommendations. Seeds of Hope for the continuation of their Senior Connections Program for $18,734. The Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor, the Len Cola Summer Program at $13,000. The Casa Grande Police Department, they are reaching, gonna do a homeless prevention or intervention program, which is new, $11,000. The Opportunity Tree is a continuation of their Creative Aging Program for $10,000. CARA for the Casa Grande Homeless Services for $19,000. So that was for public services. The next recommendation is for City Hall ADA improvements. One of the allocation, or eligible activities is to remove barriers to any public facility. So we're looking at changing out the cement, the pavers out front, and the stepover by the fountain, because those are risk for our residents to enter into our building. So they will be ADA accessibility, and also to continue on with the owner-occupied housing program and code enforcement and planning administration. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? This was a little more than last year?
Yeah, we started out last year with 435, and then we ended up getting the additional CARES money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. Powell?
Mayor, I just have a question to ask, and the two ladies and yourself are probably the ones that would know the answer more. The homeless people that you're finding, are they normally families, or are some of them single people that need a place to live? How's that working out? I guess the reason I'm asking, I've seen some of the communities have gone to these small homes that they've put together nicely and attractively and put a tree there, and but that would be maybe more than two people or something like that.
I really can't answer that question. I know with CARA...
It's both, it's both. It's singles and couples. You don't see a lot of families, because the families typically are taken care of by other organizations. What we see is couples or singles.
Singles, yeah.
Men and women, both, so. I mean, I've been out there, I've counted them, I've talked to them, so. But yeah, the problem, Mr. Powell, some of that is that it, some of them don't want to move into a house.
No, there's a lot of them that don't want to get off the street.
So we're working with CG CARES, with CARA, and we've got some stuff that we, once that we get out of the pandemic, which we're moving out of it now, I think the CARES facility is gonna stay open now. We're gonna open it five days a week, it was only three days a week, so we're gonna try and push people towards that, and the police are gonna help us, so they have a good program here as well, so we're all working together on it. Mayor? Yes, Bob?
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
To where you showed, yeah, I was gonna congratulate you on the wide variety of agencies there, I'm glad we're spreading that around. I was familiar with all of them except the Opportunity Tree. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, that used to be called the Arizona Foundation for the Handicap. They're downtown on, I think it's First Street, so they have facilities, so workforce development down there, so anybody that has any kind of developmental delays, they have a wide range of folks that come to that facility.
Okay.
And so, but the Creative Aging Program is anybody that has maybe a diagnosis of dementia or early dementia.
Okay.
So they're trying to do like, kind of like an art therapy with them for memory.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question for you, Mary. On the, these that are in front of us, I had a question from a community member, so all of them have put in for funding?
Correct.
And when, when we give them the funding, how, how do we validate that they've spent the money? Do they have monthly reports or quarterly?
Yes, they have a performance report, and then anytime they ask for reimbursement, they either have to show timesheets or, yeah, receipts of...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mary?
Just another comment.
Yeah, Lisa.
Of course, I saw the Casa Grande Police Department, and I was happy to see that because I see that they are really doing a lot on intervention, and so, so I'm happy to see, you know, that they're getting this support, and I'm not sure exactly how they're gonna use it, but I'm sure they will be using it effectively, so I was excited to see that.
Yeah, we've been helping them with like vouchers and some other things, so when they find somebody on the street, they can get them into shelter. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mary. Sorry you were last. That's what you get for being a public hearing, so since this is a public hearing, I will open the floor for a public comment. John, nothing?
Shh.
Since you're the only public here.
In person.
Okay. All right, seeing no one rush to the podium, then I'll close the public hearing, and I will call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5300, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2021 Annual Action Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5300 as presented. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Carla, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, that concludes most of tonight's business. Last, but not least, is our reports. So I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Lavender.
This afternoon, I traveled down to Tucson to watch Vista Grande playing the state championship softball game. It was an exciting game, but they came up short, five to four. They rallied in the top of the seventh, similar to the rally they had Thursday night to advance the game. This is Casa Grande's first team since 1993 that's played for a state title. Rudy Valenzuela did a great job, those girls worked so hard this year. We were just so proud of them for all their efforts, how they represented our community, but I, there was an excellent article in the Pennell Central talking about how this group was, you know, how they were developed through our Little League system, and they've been together for so long, so Brett, I know you're involved in that system as well. The Vista Boys went to the quarterfinals, Union went to the top 16 in the state, so our, our programs are in good shape. So congratulations to Coach Valenzuela, today was his last game, which is sad that he didn't go out a champion with a state title, but he certainly was a champion coach.
Yeah, that's awesome. Anything else?
Yep.
Just hats off to Public Safety, or sorry, Public Safety, Public Work Week. We have close to about 125 employees, so I just want to recognize them this, this week. Also, thank you to facilities, our clock is finally working. I think that we hear more, I hear more about, when are you guys gonna fix the clock out front? So I'm excited with that. I attended Pennell Partnership Breakfast last Friday, it was our first in-person breakfast, so that was nice. And then also, I just want to reiterate, last Wednesday, for Larry and staff, did an excellent job on our budget retreat, so that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Lisa?
I really don't have anything. I literally flew, flew in from Chicago and made it two minutes before, I land at 4:30 and made it here by 6 o'clock, so.
Good job.
I had a busy week moving my daughter, moving her back home, so I was out of town, so nothing, nothing to report.
All right. Matt?
Yeah, a couple things is, there was a great car show and little party downtown at the Neon Sign Park on Friday evening. Good turnout and few cars, quite a few cars, and it was a lot of fun. I went with my dad, so that was even better. And I attended the Budget Finance and Economic Development Policy Committee for the League of Arizona Cities, virtually, but there's an interesting one that's coming up, there's about three items on the agenda, but the most pointed one was the one, it's actually proposed by Maricopa, but it's to allow cities to change their expenditure limit or their budget midway through the year, and it's more directed towards if you have a big capital need or something that was unforeseen, especially for economic development, you know, if a big company wants to come and you need to expand your sewer treatment plan or something like that, so it'll be interesting to see. So basically, we can push forward policies and try to improve the state legislature, and it'd be a way for us to kind of have some more local control and help promote economic development and stuff, so. And last but not least, the youth commission interviews are this coming Saturday, and the kids are excited about ending the school year, and, you know, they're pretty excited they can get together and do more stuff in person now, so that's it.
Matt, thanks for being part of that committee, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell?
Well, last week was a very happy week for me. The, the memorandum that we want to send back to Washington DC to be looked at, feasibility study done on it, and hopefully be able to, you know, anybody that's Democrats, they're wanting to do infrastructure, this would be an ideal one. It would put the, the thousand miles of piping between Davenport and Wyoming Rock Springs, that'd put a whole bunch of those guys back to work again on something, and it's, would have water in it, which is the most mellow ingredient that you can put in a pipe and not have to worry about it, but the, it had gone through originally through this, in a lot of this, it goes back almost a year to when this systemic pandemic started, and everybody left, everybody went home, and I don't blame them, you know? But anyway, the House had voted on it, and it was like 53 to four in favor, went through really big. The first time, and Larry was at that one in the Senate, for some reason, it was pretty close, and we found out that somebody had told all the Democrats to vote against this, but it didn't turn out that way, and it got passed by 23 to seven, so it's on its way to Washington DC.
Good.
All right.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Congratulations, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work and well done.
Well, it was, as they say, it's got a long way to go yet on it, but it's got my fingers crossed.
Bob?
Mayor, I had the clock and budget retreat. Thank you, thank you to city staff for taking care of those two things, but that's it.
Okay, great. I did want to give Mr. Powell a shout-out on this HCM 2004. It is a, what's called a concurrent memorial, which means it's a, it's basically an ordinance that, that the state of Arizona signs, the, our Senate and House approve, and then it's sent to Washington DC, so it's a big deal. So congratulations, Mr. Powell.
Well, thank you.
One last time, the general plan update, 2030, it's due tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. Are you gonna deliver it? Are you gonna hand-deliver it? Yes, I was gonna give it to, can I give it to you?
No.
That's illegal.
I think you have to... I have to mail it?
No, just stick it... No, just stick it, just take it over to Cottonwood, to the, to the county.
Oh, it goes to the county?
Yeah, it goes to the county.
Okay. I was trying to give it to the city.
No, it goes to the county. Make sure you turn in your ballots to the county. County is conducting the election. We're, it's just our election, so it has to be turned in tomorrow by close of business tomorrow at the county office on Cottonwood, if you don't know where that is. It's right next to Safeway. So take it over there, hand-deliver it. It's a good proclamation. A lot of community work's been done on it, and I just wanted to give it one last shout-out, make sure that you, you turn in your ballot.
You don't have to do a lot of study to go yes or no on it, do you?
Said it's a yes or no question. So I, I mentioned it earlier, but I want to kind of, this is my COVID piece here. So the COVID numbers are down. They look really good. The City of Casa Grande actually is, is, for the first time, under forty infections per one hundred thousand, where it's thirty-six. It's lower than the county and it's lower than the state. So good numbers. Keep up the good work. Get vaccinated. It's still not too early or too late to get vaccinated. Because our numbers are coming down, it's a direct result of the vaccinations, so please, please, go get vaccinated. Now, the, now the challenge is gonna be that Dorothy Powell is no longer open for vaccinations. So Sun Life has pulled all the vaccinations back to their health center. But you can get vaccinations pretty much everywhere else. You can go to Walgreens, you can go to CVS, you can go to your doctor. I think in some cases, they have the vaccine, so don't not go because we closed the Dorothy Powell Vaccination Center. So get out there, get the vaccine. If you haven't got the second shot, get the second shot. We are gonna loosen up our mask requirements in the City Hall. If you are vaccinated, if you are not vaccinated, we ask that you wear a mask in our public places. So that should be an incentive to go get vaccinated. The CDC has changed their guidelines. I'm sure everybody, if you haven't watched a news broadcast, then you wouldn't know, but the CDC did change their guidelines. If you are vaccinated, you can go maskless indoors and in groups, and the six-foot spacing has, has been rescinded. So June first is when we were changing all of our hours on our libraries and on our, on our gym, on our community rec center, so that will change as well. So we should be able to increase some of our capacities, as long as you are vaccinated. And we'll increase the capacities here in City Hall, so the next city council meeting on the seventh of June, we will again allow public comment section, so it will be back on the agenda. And then we will also have larger capacity in here as well. So again, if you are vaccinated, you can, you don't have to wear a mask. If you aren't vaccinated, you need to wear a mask. That's the rule. Now, we're gonna leave that up to you to be the police, but again, we ask you to do that for public safety and for the safety of those who, for yourself, if you haven't been vaccinated as well. COVID, CDC, what else have I got? Tomorrow, we're doing the mayor's luncheon for the, I thought, I'm surprised you didn't mention that.
Faith Alliance, I know.
For the Faith Alliance. It's because you just got off a plane, I know. So I think it's at eleven o'clock tomorrow at the rec center. It's being hosted by United Way. They're, they're hosting the lunch. But I'll be there, and we'll, it should be an interesting meeting. It'll be more about an update, and then community action, some homelessness comments, I'm sure, since I haven't written the speech yet, but I'll, I'll be prepared. Oh, also, from testing standpoint, we, we stopped the testing site at Len Cola as well. So if you do need a test, you're gonna have to go, I would recommend going to the county's website. They still have all the testing facilities and connections there. Yeah, or, or there's a ton of them here in town. Walgreens, CVS, they're all doing testing as well, so. Just make sure that if you do think you need to be tested, to do it and wear a mask. Like I said, June first, we'll, we'll kind of start to open everything up. I think some of that's been announced. Well, we may, we may modify it a little bit because I think we're gonna try and increase some capacities, especially at the rec center. I know I've gotten a few complaints from people in the class sizes and some other things. So if you are all vaccinated, we can increase those class sizes. Is there a common theme here? If you're vaccinated, you can, we'll, we'll increase the capacities. If you get vaccinated, we'll increase the capacity sizes. All right. Also, I want to kind of give a shout-out to the library. They've got some great programs this summer. We sent out some notifications through the, through the website, but if you need Wi-Fi, you can use your library card at, or two of our libraries and check out a mobile hotspot. It's free. So they have mobile hotspots that you can check out, especially this summer. Try and avoid the brain, brain grain or brain drain with kids being at home. And if you, if you don't have Wi-Fi, then get a library card and get one to check out. It's a, it's a pretty cool deal. They've got all kinds of stuff. They've got Dial-a-Story. They have, they got these Tales and Tales, which is T-A-I-L-S-N-T-A-L-E-S, Tales, Tales and Tales. It's a, it's a kids' and teens' online summer reading program, so check that out on the library's website. And then we do have a blood drive coming up. The City of Casa Grande Employee Wellness Committee is sponsoring a community blood drive on Friday, May twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM. Recommend that you get an appointment. It's at the main library, and the phone number is eight-seven-seven-two-five-eight-four-eight-two-five, or visit bloodhero.com. That's bloodhero.com if you want to sign up. And that's all I've got. Oh, no, one more thing. Hot off the presses. The building new home permits for the City of Casa Grande. We are at year-to-date, five hundred and fifty building permits. That's a hundred and twelve percent increase over last year. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty-nine, and last year was a record year. So five hundred and fifty for the first four months. I think my number, two thousand, is safe. I think we're gonna get there. As long as we don't run out of lumber.
Copper wire now, and paint.
Yeah, and paint. That's the next, that's the next thing. All right. Anybody else have any last minute? Mr. Powell?
You know, I always have a last minute. I just wanted to thank you for what you've done with, with the COVID situation. That, you've put a lot into that, and, and I was, tonight, on the news, they had, they found out that Fauci, what's his name?
Fauci?
Fauci had invested in that clinic where they first, where this COVID came from. Had money invested in it, so I, that's, that's a weird deal.
That is a weird deal.
But and, and as I say, I just wanted to say thanks to you for what you've done, and and I want to say thank you to John for his, that, that development is probably solely on your shoulders, right? The increase?
Actually, Larry and I started that five years ago. Anyway, all right, thank you. No more comments, then I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. City council meeting is adjourned.
Good job.